Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the July 6th Board of Education meeting of the Chapacuas Central School District. My name is Lisa Elsner. I'm the district clerk. And the reason I'm opening the meeting this evening is because our outgoing president and vice president's terms have ended. And so I'm just getting the ball rolling. So may I have a motion to open the meeting at 7:30 PM?
I move that Hillary Grasso be elected.
Not yet.
To open the meeting?
Oh, to open the meeting. I move.
Okay. May I have a second? Okay, all in favor? Okay, motion carries. Okay, so I'd like you to rise and say the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So the board has been an executive session to discuss litigation, the employment history of particular persons, litigation, oops, sorry, that's litigation twice, matters of health and safety, and to receive advice from counsel. So we're going to get the ball rolling and we're going to swear in our newest board member, Matt Auerbach, and our superintendent Christine Ackerman. If you please rise and read your oaths.
Yep. I, Matt Auerbach, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge duties of the office of the board member of the Chapacuas Central School District according to the best of my ability.
I, Christine Ackerman, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of superintendent of the Chapacuas Central School District according to the best of my ability. Okay.
Okay, may I have a motion for Board of Education President?
I move that Hillary Grasso be elected President of the Board of Education of Chapacuas Central School District for the 2023-24 school year.
I will second that motion.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion for Board of Education Vice President?
I move that Kaylee Wong be appointed District Vice President of the Board of Education of the Chapacuas Central School District for the 2023-24 school year. She shall have the power to exercise the duties of the President in case of absence or disability of the President. In the absence of both the President and the Vice President, Brian Kelsey is authorized to act in the capacity of the President.
I second that motion.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, please stand and read your oaths, Hillary and Kaylee.
I, Hillary Grasso, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of President of the Board of Education of the Chapacuas Central School District according to the best of my ability.
I, Kaylee Wong, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Vice President of the Chapacuas Central School District according to the best of my ability.
All right.
Okay, so may I have a motion for School District Clerk? I move that Lisa Elsner be appointed School District Clerk of the Chapacuas Central School District for the 2023-24 school year.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I, Lisa Elsner, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of District Clerk of the Chapacuas Central School District according to the best of my ability.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. May I have a motion for School District Treasurer?
I move that Kathleen Lynch be appointed School District Treasurer of Chapacuas Central School District for the 23-24 school year.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye. May I have a motion for School District Deputy Treasurer?
I move that Josh Colwell Block be appointed School District Deputy Treasurer of Chapacuas Central School District for the 2023-24 school year.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
May I have a motion for Central Treasurer Extracurricular Activity Fund?
I, Frances, be appointed Central Treasurer Extracurricular Activity Fund for the Chapacuas Central District for the 2023-24 school year.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
May I have a motion for Attendance Officers?
I move that building administrators or the designees shall be appointed Attendance Officers of the Chapacuas Central School District for the 23-24 school year.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
May I have a motion for the Asbestos Management Plan Designee?
I move that Joseph Gromando be appointed Asbestos Management Plan Designee of the Chapacuas Central School District for the 2023-24 school year.
I second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
May I have a motion for Claims Auditor?
I move that Jonathan Ross shall be appointed Claims Auditor of the Chapacuas Central School District for the 2023-24 school year.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye. May I have a motion for the Chief Emergency Officer and Co-Chief Emergency Officer?
I move that Joe Gromando be appointed Chief Emergency Officer and Josh Cole Block be appointed Co-Chief Emergency Officer of the Chapacuas Central School District for the 23-24 school year.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
May I have a motion for 504 Compliance Officers, Title II ADA Compliance Officers?
I move that Andrew Corsilia and Jamie Edelman be appointed 504 Title II ADA Compliance Officers of the Chapacuas Central School Districts for the 2023-24 school year.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
May I have a motion for Student Disability Discrimination Compliance Coordinators?
I move that Andrew Corsilia and Jamie Edelman be appointed Student Disability Discrimination Compliance Coordinators of the Chapacuas Central School District for the 2023-24 school year.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye. May I have a motion to appoint members to the Committees on Special Education and Preschool Special Education?
I move that the individuals listed on the attached memo from Jamie Edelman and Karen Smith be appointed to the Committees on Special Education and Preschool Special Education of the Chapacuas Central School District for the 23-24 school year.
I second the motion.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
May I have a motion to appoint McKinney Vento Homeless Liaisons?
I move that Karen Smith and Jamie Edelman be appointed McKinney Vento Homeless Liaisons of the Chapacuas Central School District for the 2023-24 school year.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
May I have a motion to appoint the rotational list of impartial hearing officers as determined by New York State Department of Education for the 2023-24 school year?
I move that the rotational list of impartial hearing officers as determined by New York State Department of Education be appointed for the 2023-24 school year. The list shall also include the names of other certified impartial hearing officers requesting to serve in Chapacuas Central School District. Impartial hearing officers shall be selected, appointed, and compensated in accordance with Policy 3030.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
May I have a motion for the Medicaid Compliance Officers?
I move that Andrew Corsilia and Jamie Edelman be appointed Medicaid Compliance Officers of the Chapacuas Central School District for the 23-24 school year.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye. May I have a motion for Payroll Certification Officers?
I move that Josh Colwell Block and Andrew Corsilia be appointed Payroll Certification Officers of the Chapacuas Central School District for the 2023-24 school year.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye. May I have a motion for Property Control Manager?
I move that Josh Colwell Block be appointed Property Control Manager of Chapacuas Central School Districts for the 2023-24 school year.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye. May I have a motion for Purchasing Agent?
I move that Ann Holmquist be appointed Purchasing Agent of the Chapacuas Central School District for the 2023-24 school year.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye. May I have a motion for Records Management and Access Officer?
I move that Josh Colwell Block be appointed Records Management and Access Officer of the Chapacuas Central School District for the 2023-24 school year.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
May I have a motion for Appointment of School District Attorney?
I move that the firm of Shaw, Pearlson, May, and Lambert LLP be appointed School District Attorney of the Chapacuas Central School District for the 2023-24 school year.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed?
Oh, aye, sir.
May I have a motion for Appointment of School District Independent Auditor?
I move that the firm PKF O'Connor Davies LLP be appointed as School District Independent Auditors of the Chapacuas Central School District for the 2023-24 school year.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
May I have a motion for Community Members of the Audit Committee?
I move to appoint Christopher Dalrymple, Matthew White, and Fred Wang as Community Members of the Audit Committee of the Product Committee of the Chapacuas Central School District for the 2023-24 school year.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye. May I have a motion for the Appointment of School District Bond Counsel?
I move that the firm of Hawkins, Delafield, and Wood LLP be appointed as School District Bond Counsel of the Chapacuas Central School District for the 2023-24 school year.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
May I have a motion for Appointment of School District Financial Advisor?
Fiscal Advisor, Hillary, right, yeah. I move that the firm of Bernard Donegan Inc. be appointed as School District Fiscal Advisor of the Chapacuas Central School District for the 2023-24 school year.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Okay.
May I have a motion for Title IX, District Title IX Coordinators?
I move that Sandra Seppi, Jeff Curtis, Joseph Maza, Deborah Alsback, Tanya Wilson, and James Scoog be appointed District Title IX Coordinators of the Chapacuas Central School District for the 2023-24 school year.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
May I have a motion for District Title IX Investigators?
I move that Josh Colwell Block and Jamie Edelman be appointed District Title IX Investigators of the Chapacuas Central School District for the 2023-24 school year.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye. May I have a motion for the District Title IX Decision Maker?
I move that Andrew Corsilia be appointed District Title IX Decision Maker of the Chapacuas Central School District for the 2023-24 school year.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
May I have a motion for Title VI and Title VII Compliance Officers?
I move that Andrew Corsilia and Jamie Edelman be appointed Title VI and Title VII Compliance Officers of the Chapacuas Central School Districts for the 2023-24 school year.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye. May I have a motion for DASSA Coordinators?
I move that Andrew Corsilia, Jamie Edelman, Sandra Seppi, Karime Soto, Ronald Gamma, Laurel Lynn Stewart, Joseph Sullivan, Jeff Curtis, Joseph Maza, Jessica Rappaport, Deborah Alsback, Ryan Spillane, Tanya Wilson, Ross Cooper, James Scoog, and Jennifer Keen Thompson be appointed DASSA Coordinators of the Chapacuas Central School District for the 2023-24 school year.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye. May I have a motion for Depositories?
I move that Bank of New York, JP Morgan Chase, Bank of America, Commerce Bank, M&amp;T Bank, TD Bank, ENY Mellon, People's United Bank, NY Class, and NY LAF designated as depositories for the funds of the Chapacuas Central School District for the 2023-24 school year beginning July 1st, 2023, and ending June 30th, 2024.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
May I have a motion for Investments?
I move that Kathleen Lynch Treasurer and Josh Colwell Block Deputy Treasurer be authorized to take appropriate action in the investment of Chapacuas Central School District Funds during the 2023-24 school year.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye. May I have a motion for Newspapers?
I move that for the purpose of advertising bids and other legal notices of the Chapacuas Central School District during the 2023-24 school year, the Journal News, as the newspaper of record, The Examiner, and the New York Times be designated.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye. May I have a motion for Petty Cash?
I move that Petty Cash accounts in accordance with policy be approved for the 2023-24 school year as follows. Superintendent's Office, $100, Douglas Grafflin Elementary School, $100, Royenbrook Elementary, $100, West Orchard Elementary School, $100, Horace Greeley High School, $100, Robert Yvonne Middle School, $100, Seven Bridges Middle School, $100.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
May I have a motion for Treasurer's Bonds?
I move that the Treasurer's Bonds in the amount of $100,000, as executed by NYSR, be approved as to form insufficiency for the 2023-24 school year.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
May I have a motion for Data Protection Officer?
I move to appoint Andrew Taylor as Data Protection Officer of the Chapacuas Central School District for the 2023-24 school year.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
May I have a motion for Internal Auditor?
I move to appoint Nauraki Smith LLP as Internal Auditor of the Chapacuas Central School District for the 2023-24 school year.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That brings us to the President's Report. Um. I'm going to be very, very brief. Uh, welcome to the 2023-2024 school year. As many of you know, the school year starts on July 1st, so we are about a week in. I want to welcome Matt and Alyssa and Abstentia to the board. We're really excited to work with you. We're really excited to have you here. Um, we spent the last two days as guests at the Administrative Summer Retreat, which is always a pleasure. We get to learn and work along with the administrators um, as they start the preparation for the upcoming school year. Um, and that was great. We got to hear from a number of phenomenal speakers, uh, both around academic improvement in our school and also around social emotional development in our schools. Um, and I know that Dr. Ackerman's going to speak about that a little bit, so I'll leave that to her. Uh, and we also got to spend yesterday at Stone Barns, um, learning a lot that informs our work around our K-12 sustainability curriculum. So that was also really fun and exciting and warm. Um, so we're really excited to start this school year, and I think that it will be a great school year, even as everybody is in the midst of hopefully thoroughly enjoying their summer vacations. Oh, so I am also going to share the board committee and liaison assignments, which, give me one second. Okay. So the assignments that we are undertaking for this year are as follows. Um, on the Policy Committee will be Kaylee and Ryan. On the Communications Committee will be myself and Ryan. On the Facilities Committee will be myself and Kaylee. Health and Safety will be Kaylee and Matt. All of us serve on the Audit Committee. Ryan will be chairing that for us. Um, the Cares Committee will be Ryan and Alyssa. Matt will be on the Green Committee, and Alyssa will be on the Wellness Committee. Um, in terms of the liaison positions, Chapacuas Schools Foundation will be Ryan. Uh, Horace Greeley's Fellowship Fund will be Kaylee. Um, I will be serving as the PTA Liaison. Matt will be the liaison to the Sports Boosters. Um, and in terms of the Westchester Putnam School Boards Association, um, Kaylee and I are going to hopefully both be very active with them this year and are hoping to both really serve in that liaison role. And that's that.
Thank you, Hillary. Adam, if you could just refresh the Superintendent's Report, that would be great. All right, so I just want to begin by welcoming Alyssa and Matt to the board. I know Alyssa couldn't be here today, but we're really thrilled to be able to welcome two of our parents who have kids in different parts of the district to be a part of our team. And thank you, Matt, for participating in our retreat, uh, the past two days and to the rest of the Board of Education. The administrative team, we do a lot of work together to, um, you know, plan and prepare for the new school year, and it's important. And we always benefit from the board's leadership and their shared experience with us as we plan forward for the district. Um, just a brief overview of some of the things that we've been working on the past two days together, as we've had, um, an opportunity to review our own leadership skills and how they impact group dynamics and making decisions for, uh, the district. We went to Stone Barns to kind of capitalize on that space, um, to talk about like sustainability work and how we can, um, increase our work throughout our district with our students. And then today we had some really important keynotes. We had John Hattie, um, as our first presenter this morning, and he does a meta-analysis of all, all kinds of research on, on what works in classrooms and how to, um, what are some adjustments that we can be thinking about to increase student performance and, um, within our spaces? So we, we did that work collectively, and in the afternoon, we, uh, spent time learning from Dr. Lawrence Steinberg from the University of Pennsylvania. He really talked about adolescent developments and some shifts that, um, schools are experiencing and some things that we can be thinking about as we support our students and their social emotional development over the, uh, over the course of their experience here from kindergarten all the way through 12th grade. So we had a really great, um, experience, and I want to thank Adam and Andrew and Josh and Jamie for helping plan our leadership retreat, and of course, our administrators for being there today. So now I'd like Andrew to talk about our Bell Assistant Principal, who's on the agenda for your consideration this evening. So Andrew?
Sure, thank you. Um, it's my pleasure to recommend to you Christine Paratino, uh, to be the next Assistant Principal at Bell Middle School. She's a little bit later on the agenda. Uh, we're really fortunate to, um, have her. Uh, she has 10 years' experience as a middle school Assistant Principal that she's going to bring to Bell, which is, uh, an incredible amount of experience and expertise. Um, I think it's really going to benefit our kids. She is part of that role. A lot of the experience she's had really overlaps with the roles and responsibilities that she'll have at, at Bell. And it's from hiring and scheduling staff evaluation. She's been a DASSA Coordinator. She's experienced with MTSS and RTI. She served on strategic committees, strategic planning committees, district-wide committees, including Wellness Committee. She's familiar with NWA MAPS implementation. Uh, she developed a sixth-grade, uh, university for the transition of, of parents, of students and families into the middle school, and then extended that to seventh and eighth grade around executive functioning. She's been a district health coordinator, administrative intern, great team leader, health teacher, uh, way back. Um, she's been really impressive in the interview process. I've met her several times. She relates exceptionally well to the faculty who met her, to our parents, and to our students, warm and inviting, uh, really collegial and, um, and, and really seems to be very effective, but really happy to have her come.
It on the agenda tonight. So at our last meeting, we talked about, uh, a license plate reader system at Greeley that we were piloting and a school pass, um, opportunity for us to help manage our, our, our students better on this campus. So that resolution is on the agenda tonight for your consideration. So our, our first step is implementing it at Greeley, then, um, evaluating whether or not it should be expanded district-wide, at least the license plate reader part of the system. So that's on the, the board agenda tonight for consideration. And then I just wanted Adam to highlight one of our contracts.
Sure. So we've worked with Shelley for several years. Um, the board has seen her resolution or her contract on the agenda. Um, last year, we brought Caitlin Plate on board as our math professional developer. She's got, uh, quite a bit of high school, I think 18 years of high school teaching experience. And we relied pretty heavily on Shelley last year. This coming year, we're cutting her contract in about half, um, as we bring kind of Caitlin up to speed. Shelley worked closely with Caitlin on the Math and Focus implementation. Shelley's an expert in, um, our elementary math program, our K-5 math program. So she supports kind of that K-5 implementation as we build capacity in Caitlin Plate. Um, we're relying less heavily on Shelley, but Shelley still does come. You can see her there on the right side, um, modeling lessons for our teachers. She does a lot of teacher coaching, some pull-out professional development, and things like that. So, um, we, like I said, we reduce that contract by about half, um, but we still think she has a lot to add to our program as we build capacity on our, on our own team internally, um, with a high school professional developer who's kind of learning our elementary system.
So then just the last two things I'd like to share, because we don't normally present during the summer months because a lot of our families aren't tuned in because they're traveling. But I do want to do a few, um, important dates for consideration. So just as a reminder, and this has been pushed out to the community already, but August 23rd, we welcome our new families to our schools, um, in grades one through 12. And then August 30th is when we're having our orientations for kindergarten, fifth grade, and ninth grade on our campuses. And kindergarten will start school on the Tuesday after, uh, Labor Day as a full day, which is a shift in our practice. Um, after a discussion with the administrative team, we felt like that would, um, be a better model for parents and for students to begin school, uh, as a full-day schedule. Uh, just like every other student in the district, and we'll evaluate whether or not that made sense after we, uh, do it this first time. And, and we'll talk about when we plan for next year, if we're going to continue that model. And then, um, a few other things. This, I'm going to send out a notice tomorrow. Uh, on Saturday morning, we have a big emergency responder drill here at Greeley. We're working with our partners. Um, and it'll be taking place from about 8:00 to 12:00. So the campus will be closed in the morning from 7:00 AM to 12:00 noon. So we're just asking our families if they'd like to use our facilities just to come after 12:00 as we practice some of our emergency response, should there be an incident at Greeley during the school year. And we're, we're very grateful to our local police and first responders for participating in a drill with us in this way. And then, um, of course, August 8th is our next business meeting. And, um, on the 19th is when our, our campus will open officially again as we begin our high school sports season. So, um, that's it for the Superintendent's Report. Thank you.
That brings us to our public comment period. We welcome public comments, and in respect for each other's time, we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. Board members may be contacted via email or phone. After the public comment period has been completed, board members may have a discussion amongst themselves regarding the comments presented.
Friends of Button Hook Forest and the Bretherstown Indian Nation, who have a current bid before the Board of Education for the purchase of the Zotara property, Button Hook Forest. As we start the new calendar year, we want to express our gratitude and appreciation for the time invested by all the members of the Board of Ed in overseeing such a wide array of matters that concern our children and their education in our community. Your dedication and commitment is so appreciated by us all. Congratulations to Matt Auerbach and Alyssa Dorfman for their successful election to the board and for Matt officially being sworn in this evening. In this new year, we look forward to doing something big together, acting as land stewards for the successful preservation of this environmentally sensitive land in the New York City Reservoir Watershed at Button Hook. Perhaps the recent air quality issues we've been facing with murky skies are impetus enough to rethink how we as a community can respond to preserve nature's air purifiers are for us. It was clear that your predecessors, who started the development subdivision process, did not realize just what it meant to own land in the New York City Reservoir Watershed, or what the passage of the New York State Green Amendment would do to bolster environmental oversight, as we saw with the recent Attorney General Watershed Report, with concerns about engineering, stormwater runoff, building on steep slope, and the impact on the new Proton Reservoir. But we have come a long way together. In May 2022, your attorney, Kristen Motel, advised our group of local residents that the CCSD contract with the developer was no longer in effect. In June 2022, we formed a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, Friends of Button Hook Forest, for the purpose of saving this land from development. In August 22, we submitted a bid, partnering with the Bretherstown Indian Nation in the CCSD public bid process for the sale of the land that opened in June 2022. We put in a good-faith bid deposit of $100,000 to the CCSD, which is still being held, and provided proof of funds available to support our bid, to take the land without condition for preservation. Interest rates have risen. Raw land prices in our area have fallen, but we remain committed to our bid. Forty organizations have signed on to support preserving Button Hook Forest and the Native American ceremonial site that exists there. Last year, you heard from many of them. Hundreds of people have now made donations towards the cost of acquiring the Button Hook property for preservation. The environmental issues on the property are far more plentiful than anyone ever realized. And most recently, there's evidence of endangered species and animals of special concern that live there. All is to say, there are more and more reasons why preserving this land makes long-term sense. The Board of Education is the chance to make history. Please stand.
The Board of Education is the chance to make history. Please stand up to the former developer who's looking for financial gain. Let's do this together. We remain committed to the long-term goal of preserving this land for future generations. Imagine the educational possibilities. We invite you to come visit the land with us. May the generations that come after us be able to look back and applaud what we were able to accomplish together. Wishing you a successful and fulfilling year ahead. Thank you very much.
Okay, if that is the end of public comment, um, as I mentioned, we can say something after. I just do want to mention that, as we've mentioned previously, um, there is still pending litigation regarding the Button Hook property, and we can't really say anything more about that or anything more about the property until that's resolved.
That's correct.
Okay, um, so that brings us to items, item six. Um, so can I have a motion for six point one, the, uh, that the Board of Ed accepts the minutes of the June twenty-first, twenty-three board meeting? Questions? All in favor? Um, I will move item six point two, which is policy zero one three zero, which is the desk district equity policy. Um, on the table tonight is a second reading and adoption. Um, can I have a second?
I'll say.
So are there any questions or discussion? This was put forth a couple weeks ago for first reading. We got some feedback. The policy committee met again. We didn't really revise it. Um, we felt like it was good the way it was, um, but we wanted, we felt that it was important that on the precipice of the board changing over, that the new board be the one to adopt or push back the, uh, the, uh, the policy. So are there any questions or comments? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Um, okay. Uh, thank you for adopting that policy. It'll be very helpful as we plan for new teacher orientation and the start of the school year to be able to use that policy to help move our work forward. So thank you very much. I recommend seven point one instructional as presented.
I move seven point one.
A second.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
I recommend seven point two non-instructional as presented.
I have a motion for seven point two?
I'll move seven point two.
I will second. Any questions or discussion? All in favor? Uh, that brings us to our consent agenda, which is under eight today. Um, the use of consent agenda permits the Board of Education to make more effective use of its time by adopting a single motion to cover those relatively routine matters which are included. Any member of the board who wishes to discuss individually a particular piece of business on the consent agenda may so indicate, and that item will be considered and voted on separately, thus preserving the right of all board members to be heard on any issue. So it's a preliminary matter. We have items eight point one through eight points to seven tonight. Is there anything within those that anybody would like to remove from the consent agenda? And can I have a motion, please, for eight point one through eight point two seven?
I'll move.
Second. Any questions or comments on anything under there? Um, it's CSE summaries, which are fairly routine, uh, car allowance changes, um, and then a lot of, uh, items covering, making sure our buildings are covered in the event of absences of administrators. Um, and, and a lot of, uh, agreements that are fairly routine that allow us to continue to operate through the start of the next school year. Okay. All in favor, please say aye. Um, item nine is a, a Board of Education acknowledging the following contracts approved already by our superintendent. Um, so I will move item nine point one, which is acknowledging an agreement for services with Lori Armstrong Coaching and Consulting. A second. Any questions or comments? All in favor? We have nothing under facilities. Um, can I have a motion, please, for eleven point one, which is acknowledging receipt of the Claims Auditor Report for June of twenty-three?
Second.
All in favor? And then twelve is twelve point one is an annual affirmation of all policies previously adopted by the board. Which is exactly what it sounds like. In moving this, we are affirming that we continue to adopt, uh, all of the previously adopted policies of this board. So I will move item twelve point one. I'll second. Any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye. Okay, that brings us to notice of future meetings. Our next business meeting is Tuesday, August eighth, two thousand twenty-three, at seven PM here in the auditorium, and that is our tax warrant meeting. Um, I'll just note at this time that all future meetings will be starting at seven o'clock, um, unless otherwise noticed. Um, can I have a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting at eight oh eight PM?
I'll move them.
Second. All in favor? We are adjourned.